Good evening, everyone. Fall of October 21st, 2019, Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Clerk will call the roll.
Borwitz, Brereton.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Radcliffe. Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight in favor?
Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, tonight as the City Council convenes to fulfill our responsibility to make decisions on behalf of our community, we ask for your guiding hand that we be wise in our policies, prudent in the stewardship of our taxpayers' funds, and are true listening here to the needs of all of our citizens. The world today is seemingly in chaos, and we give thanks for the blessings of our Belvidere community. We are grateful to our public service partners, police, fire, public works, and educators. Their diligence and professionalism make our lives safer and easier. We ask that you watch over them as they watch over us. These things we ask in your name. Next up, under number four, we have approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of October 7th, 2019, is presented. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Brereton. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Under number five, Public Hearing, we have none this evening, but under number six, under Special Messages and Proclamations, we have a proclamation for Rotary International, and we have Ms. Claire Garrett in the audience. Would you like to come up, Claire?
How are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you.
Proclamation for Rotary International. Whereas Rotary is a global network of 1.2 million neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas Rotary model, service above self, inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than $1.9 billion in countless volunteer hours protecting more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $15 million per year, which would be leveraged with maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. And whereas there are over 17,000 Rotary members in more than 48 clubs throughout District 6420, which encompasses much of northern Illinois, that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in the local communities abroad. Therefore, I, Michael Chamberlain, mayor of Belvidere, Illinois, hereby proclaim October 24th, World Polio Day in Belvidere, and encourage all citizens to join me and the Rotary International in the fight for polio-free world.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody that sees the pink, purple, pinky painted is, can you hear me?
No.
Is for the polio eradication, those babies.
And children that are inoculated around the world. We did drops in the sugar cubes, but we've discovered, just recently, you perhaps heard that there were two cases from the Philippines just within the last month, two months, I think it is now. So polio has not gone away, and many of you here may know someone from your childhood or someone you know currently suffering with this disease. And Bill and Melinda Gates were mentioned. For every dollar we donate to Polio Plus, they donate too. So that's helped get us to this billion-dollar, dollar amount. I thank you all for the proclamation. If you see anybody with the purple pinky, you'll know what it means, and you're welcome to come to our meeting anytime, every Wednesday at noon at, out on, off the access road at the American Legion. 12 o'clock, lunch is on us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
First time.
Gives you hope for the world, people do things like that. Under number seven, Approval of Expenditures, we have general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,977,974.03. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Crawford. Questions, comments concerning any of the expenditures? Alderman Freeman.
Thank you. I have, again, several questions. Sometimes it pains me to ask the difficult questions, but I don't feel like I would be doing my constituents due diligence if I wasn't the best Alderman I could be. So, page 12, I wish Chief Woody were here. But I guess you can answer. So down at the bottom, Denny's Car Hauling. These are all tow charges. Do we have squads that break down on the side of the road? Or, you know, why are we towing all these squads? And why is the first one $1,775 because we paid storage on it?
Yeah, I'm on failure with the $1,700 charge at this particular time. It is common, unfortunately, that our squads occasionally do need to be towed due to breakages, due to breakdowns, whether that be in roadway or in the back park of the Public Safety Building. I can certainly check into the $1,700 charge there. And they also may be for asset forfeiture vehicles, as those occasionally have to be towed as well.
Okay, and then on page 15, these, the tri-city emergency, they're removing equipment. I'm assuming that all four of these squads are being retired, and they're being stripped of their, their police equipment?
That is correct. And most of that equipment, that, any equipment that we can recycle into the next vehicles, we do so.
So, page 17, then. Jack Wolfe. I believe that Squad 29 is accident repairs for $4,603.
Yes, that was a result of a crash.
Okay, so, last month, we also had a high expenditure of $5,037 at Barnes Autobody for an accident repair, and a constituent called me and said that currently we have a squad that's smashed up at the Boone County Autobody West on Locust Street. So are we, like, getting in an accident once a month? And are these involving other vehicles?
Yes, these are, generally speaking, these are involving other vehicles, and I believe at least the last three or four crashes that we've had have been non-at-fault crashes by our officers. The one you're referring to at Barnes Autobody was a situation where that vehicle was T-boned by the other vehicle.
Okay, so then, assuming that our squads are insured, the other drivers then would have to pay, other than our deductible, to have those repaired, correct? So do we have a super-high deductible?
So, I'll answer a couple of the questions. If a vehicle is totaled, our insurance company has to come out and look at it, so if they cannot come out right away, then it is stored, and that's why you pay storage. Our insurance company will pay minus a $500 deductible, that's what our deductible is for our automobiles. Then we go after those who have hit the squad cars, and we have had a number of those this year, and then we get the deductible back as well.
Okay, so these expenditures actually will probably, we'll get those back.
Right.
I guess, moving on to page 21, that would be our fire chief. The legacy fire apparatus, repairs and maintenance for chassis service for $4,978.82, is that a repair, or is that just like maintenance, like a lube job, and what?
That's, that's maintenance, yearly maintenance for that. It predict oil change, lubrication, and anything they find that they fix it for us.
Okay. And then on 25, this is Police and Fire Commission. It appears that we're doing pre-employment exams, and one of them, Mr. Hendrickson's, is totaled up to like $1,400, where Mr. Kasparovics is only 343. Is that because one's police and one's fire? Or is Mr. Kapovic not as far along? Or why is the huge discrepancy in the pre-employment?
I don't have page number 25.
So, you may not have all of the bills on this bill's payable. You are correct, one is police, one is fire. They may do different evaluations on the police and fire. They're typically, though, about $1,500.
Okay.
We also do a psych, some of, some of these payables here are for psychs as well.
Okay. So then on page 40, under Forestry, there's $18,928 for tree removal. Do you, how many trees have, did we cut down for, for that? Is that like a yearly thing, or is that, we cut down a whole bunch of trees last month?
Well, that's, usually typically what will happen is we'll put the, generate the list of the trees to come down, and then we get to them, and then when they have a sufficient list, and they schedule it, and they come out, and they'll do it. So it's several trees, and it's based on the unit pricing, all of our tree work is based on unit pricing per inch diameter.
Okay. And my last one is from Capital Funds, page 53. There's a J.L.A. Limited miscellaneous expense for completion of bronze for $30,000. What, do you know what that is about, Becky?
I'll take that.
You want to take that?
That is the statue, Jack Wolfe statue, the money passed through City Hall. So we wrote the check to the sculptor, and Jack reimbursed the city.
Oh, okay, 'cause I was gonna say, I thought, I thought that that came from the Wolfe Family Foundation.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions?
They had to pay somebody.
Additional questions or comments concerning general fund expenses? Yes, Alderman Porter.
This one's for Becky, I guess. On the first page of the credit card receipts, or credit card statements here, they've got Hilton Hotels, Chicago, the IML, for $1,000. I was just wondering how many days that represents.
That was three nights, and the, the cost. It was 267 a night, plus taxes. I was there four nights, I paid for one of the nights myself. Anyone else? Okay. So a motion and a second, we've answered questions, all those in favor of approval. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Passed unanimously, which then takes us to water and sewer expenditures of $535,657.06. Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments about any of these expenditures? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved. And if I may, address Porter's previous question. Every year when we pass the budget, we put $10,000 aside for the IML Convention, which pays for any Alderman that wished to attend also, and no one elected to attend this year. And I obviously am going to attend because I'm an officer of the IML. Okay. Under number eight, Committee Reports on Minutes of City Officers, please notice that items A through H have been received and placed on file, which brings us to item I, Minutes of the Committee of the Whole, Building, Planning, and Zoning and Public Works of October 14th, 2019. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Frank. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Opposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Brings us to item nine, Unfinished Business, which is Ordinance 470H, a second reading, an ordinance amending section 110-91, stop streets of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code to add Garfield Avenue at West Fifth Street as a two-way stop. May I have a motion to approve? Alderman Brereton. Alderman McGee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Ordinance 470H is confirmed unanimously. Under B, we had put the NICOR issue on the table, and we will leave it on the table. We're still negotiating with NICOR and Azebar. So that brings us to 10 new business. We have one silent reading, which I will read publicly for the folks at home. It's concerning Ordinance 471H, a first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to permit a planned development within the Central Business District, a container park at 300 South Main Street. This'll come back for further discussion and voting. Yes, sir?
Can I just ask a quick question? I was just curious what a container park is.
Oh, it's a park, and you can bring your empty containers, throw them in there. No, no. It's a, Gina, you want to describe it?
It sounds worse than what it is. So, the large shipping containers that you see in the docks, they get retrofitted. They, you get, you put doors in them, you put windows in them, and they are for like pop-up shops. So, say, there's someone that does photography of their house, and the house is chaotic, and they'd rather rent the storage container for the day and turn that into their studio. Or people that have the crowd sales 30 times a year, maybe they should be renting those on the weekends and selling out of those. You can have birthday parties out of them. There's going to be a large seating area and pavilion, so you could have outdoor activities, maybe even a band. One of the containers will be retrofitted as a restroom, another one will be retrofitted as a concession stand. Buchanan Street Strolls, if it rains out, we can move it in there. Farmer's Market could set up there, each, you know, produce vendor could have a container. There's one in Chicago, I think they call it Boom Park, Chicago. That's a good example. There's one in Toronto. They're becoming really popular in larger cities, very trendy, but it's great for those businesses that don't, that don't have the backing to, to rent a storefront, to renovate an entire storefront. That's a lot of upfront cost for starting a business. This, you can almost think of it as like a small business incubator. Let them be open on the weekends, let them figure out their business plan, let them build up a customer base, and then move into a storefront.
Yes.
Two questions, or one as a comment. The container that's over on the empty lot advertising for the Buchanan Street deal, it was over on Fairgrounds Road, that has like a door and a window, if you wanted to go look, if it's still there?
Yep, that'd be like a, it's a smaller container, but yeah, retrofitted in that style.
And then, the other is, when you talk about the restroom, just to get this out of the way, is this going to be a city water and sewer, or is it going to be a glorified porta potty?
It'll be, it'll be city water and sewer. He's working on that, those connections and drawings now. Everything will still need to meet building and fire codes, they have to have their permits approved. So it's not just going to be dump out a rusty container, move in, they're going to have to be retrofitted, they're going to have to meet codes, they'll have to be ADA compliant, all that stuff. Maintain property maintenance code will apply to them.
With the success of stroll, we don't want to stand on our laurels. She mentioned Toronto and downtown Chicago. We want to be on the cutting edge of this thing, too, because people of all ages love these things, and it will add an additional feature to our stroll thing, and be available for hometown Christmas, for Heritage Days. And the neat thing about it is, after it's been up for a while, if you decide there's something else you'd rather put in there, it isn't that big to move, you know? You can relocate them someplace else. Yes, Alderman Snow?
And would they be potentially subject to having upper deck areas that are railed off with stairs to access?
I have seen some that have done that. This applicant has not shown interest in that, because then you're getting into more life safety issues, the railing, the ADA compliance to get upstairs. He hasn't shown interest in that. You know, he bought the property with plans to do one development. There's a significant grade elevation, that's what really halted that development from taking place. It wasn't bad soils, it wasn't EPA, I've seen a lot of rumors floating around out there. It was mostly the grade elevations were too great to deal with.
Turn-on investment was going to be extremely long-term to meet all of the requirements.
Yeah. So he's looking at this as an investment to do until something else comes along, because as the mayor said, you unbolt them, and you can move them. So it's not a permanent installation.
I think this is project number seven. And so, Mr. Caldwell has a pretty fair track record with the things he does for downtown, so we welcome his participation. Any additional questions or comments?
Do we want to put this on next week's agenda, or do we anticipate more people coming in? Because I saw there was two people, Mr. Wolfe and Caldwell himself, commented in the thing, so I didn't know if you guys had had more people that were showing interest in saying something that we might want to have a meeting of Committee of the Whole.
I received one phone call from a gentleman that owns several of the rental properties adjacent to it. He just wanted to know if there was like a sound ordinance and stuff like that, and I explained that the metal building that's there is not being removed, so that building will act as a great buffer. And then he had made the comment that he's torn on what to do with his properties. Does he spend the money to fix them up, and then have the train station come, and they're going to get torn down anyway? Or does he let them stay the way they are? And, use your judgment on that. So he just had questions about how that's going to impact long-term investment, and if the train comes, stuff, how would that impact that? And it may, if, you know, the state does a 180, we get a train station, that could be a very nice counterpart to it. And then Mr. Wolfe spoke in favor. I have not received any other phone calls or letters from anyone, so.
At this point, there would be no plan to make it an agenda item, so. Anything else? Okay. Next, we have motions forwarded from the Committee of the Whole, Building, Planning, and Zoning and Public Works of October 14th, 2019. Motions will be presented by Chairman Porter. Chairman Porter?
Motion to approve waiving the building and zoning fees in the amount of $871 for the Habitat for Humanity Home at 531 East Locust Street.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is passed unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Porter. Next, we have motions of public works presented by Chairman Freeman. Chairman Freeman, you have the floor.
Thank you. B, motion to approve the work authorization for construction engineering services from CES Inc. in an amount not to exceed $11,050 for the sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation project. This work will be paid for from sewer line item number 61-5-820-6040.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
C, motion to approve the proposal from Kleinfeldt Drive Wall and Painting in the amount of $8,250 for repainting the exterior block portions of C.R. The cost of this work will be paid for from line item number 01-5-110-6010, building maintenance.
Motion out of committee. Unless you.
Thanks.
Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Alderman Frank?
Could somebody tell me why it's so much to paint drywall? Or the exterior blocks?
It's the size of the building, the square footage that's involved, it'll be, have to be primed and prepped prior to painting, too. It's all those factors involved.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify. Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when your name is called, sign... Excuse me? All those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
D, motion to approve the low bid from Timber Industries LLC in the amount of $9,300 for grinding of the city's branch pile. This work will be paid for from line item number 01-5-310-6826.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor approval. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
E, motion to approve the low bid from PDC Laboratories for the groundwater monitoring at Belvidere Municipal Landfill Number 1 from July 2020 until August 2021.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton. Eight in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
F, motion to approve street closure on October 31st, 2019, from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM, with 7th Avenue closed between Star Street and West Fifth Street for Belvidere First Assembly of God.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Freeman. Under number 11, we have adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.